This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our December North Haven Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm Michael Frieda, North Haven's first selectman, and thank you for joining us. Joined this evening by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Thank you very much. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number two, I'd like to make my own public comment to tonight's agenda. There is an item on the agenda that will be addressed a little bit later. And my public comment to the item on the agenda is that recently, one of our citizens received a very threatening letter in the mail. It was actually brought to my attention by Teresa Veely, who's here this evening. Teresa came into my office, I immediately called the North Haven Police Department, and a full investigation then ensued. So I wanted to let everyone know, here this evening, and those watching on TV, this type of conduct is not condoned, endorsed, or supported by this government. On behalf of Mr. Piper, myself, and Ms. Buemi, we do not support vandalism, we do not encourage vandalism. And ladies and gentlemen, North Haven is much better than that. To the person that wrote the letter, you're better than that. This government will not support that type of behavior. And that's my public comment to tonight's agenda, that agenda item. Okay. Any other public comment to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to item number three, approval of the minutes of the special board of selectmen meeting of November 13th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item number four, ladies and gentlemen, if you will direct your attention to the TV screens, I'd like to provide an overview of some of the things that are happening here in North Haven. From an operational standpoint, I wanted to remind everyone that our North Haven leaf pickup commenced on November 5th. We completed the first round of leaf pickups across the town, and we will continue to pick up leaves that remain curbside, weather permitting. Now, the anticipated end date of this very labor-intensive procedure is approximately December 15th. That is the approximate date that it will conclude. I'd like to remind everyone who has not had leaves picked up yet to please do not put the leaves in the middle of the road. That creates a traffic and safety hazard for the town residents who drive on those streets. We will continue to move forward with this in the event of a major snowstorm between now and the 15th of December. We'll look to extend the process and the program, but that's where we stand right now. It started on November 5th. In terms of our center block, you noticed a lot of construction going on in the center block area of the town. This is a byproduct of a grant we received for about a half a million dollars. And the goal within that center block is to improve the logistics of that center block from a traffic standpoint, from a pedestrian standpoint, from a drivability standpoint, and also from the standpoint of getting greater public safety access out of the parking lot to Broadway and into the parking lot from Broadway for police and fire. So we ask for your patience while the work continues. There's a new drainage system being put in place there. We've also updated the drainage system and put a main water line on Elm Street with the help of the RWA. It's been very inconveniencing for many of us who are here every day, but it's something we really need to do to set the town up for future logistical improvements, a very important project. Weather has been an issue, as we say here. We're hoping to get the pavement poured to the asphalt. Now, here's the tricky part about this. With respect to this, the asphalt plants are closing in about a week and a half. So we're really pushing these contractors hard because we really would like to get that paved, but that's a question mark right now. So we, meaning the town government, the engineers, are working diligently with those who are working diligently out on the site, those outside contractors. But as a general reminder, the pool lot is always available for parking for pedestrians who would need to walk to get to the library. If their library spots are taken because of the construction or because of what's going on there, the pool parking lot has ample parking. Recently, we had a major fire. This was an industrial fire at Defco Park. And I wanted to comment on this, and even Sally had mentioned this also to Valerie, that this fire represented an outstanding collaborative effort between the North Haven Fire Department, the North Haven Police Department, and they were on scene very quickly, based upon the alert aspect of a North Haven patrolman who noticed some smoke billowing out of the building. So our fire department was deployed. This fire had some chemicals associated with it, and for our fire department, a great deal of equipment was destroyed. Air packs infected, gear infected, and we now are looking at approximately an $800,000 replacement cost. And when we met with the chief, my initial response was, we are not going to wait. We will find the money somehow because we need our firefighters with that equipment, the air packs, the gear, and other equipment that are needed. And the chief is working with us. He's done an outstanding job, our fire chief, Chief Paul Janushevsky, working with us, creating purchase orders. And these purchase orders are designed to replace the equipment as quickly as possible. In conjunction with this, we have a lot of distractions here, so just bear with me. A very important part of this is that we thank the city of Stanford, working with our fire chief, because we're going to have 40 or so air packs on loan from the Stanford Fire Department to help our fire department in short term until we replace all the equipment. So we're still calculating the damage in the equipment. We think it's going to be about $800,000. We will be filing insurance claims with our own insurance company. The business itself has been very cooperative with our fire department. There'll probably be claims also submitted. The company's also willing to make a major donation, working with the chief on that. So the bottom line on this is our goal is to replace the equipment as quickly as possible, front the money, and then hopefully get reimbursed after the fact. From a financial standpoint, you've heard the news that the town has been AAA rated now for the fifth consecutive year. This helps us tremendously for two reasons. It enables us to bond at the lowest interest rates for town improvements, but it also is critically important for us to help attract new businesses here in town. And I'll show you an example of that in a few moments. The 2018-2019 budget we are in the middle of right now. We are starting to prepare for the 2019-2020 fiscal year budget, which begins, as you know, July 1st. So the Board of Finance will be entertaining the workshop sessions, starting in January, where each department presents to the Board of Finance what the needs may be for this coming fiscal year. These workshops, once again, will be in January, and here's kind of a schedule where we are right now, ladies and gentlemen. You can see on the screen, Public Works, the library, and other departments, and those are the dates, those are the times. Those meetings will be held here, televised here at Town Hall. From an economic development standpoint, as many of you know, this is where I spend a great deal of my time, working with businesses.
Oh, I thought you meant at the brewery.
Good, very good. Well, actually, folks...
And no wonder I could never find you.
I have spent a great deal of time with this company. And so, yes, I've spent a great deal of time here. And let me fill you in on what happened here. This is a specialty beer brewery. And we have one of our companies in town who owns buildings and renovates buildings. So I brought this client in, introduced him to one of the people that owns one of the buildings off of Sackett Point Road, and they quickly determined and worked out a lease arrangement. So this is going to be about a 30,000-square-foot building, and this is a new, unique business here in North Haven, a manufacturing business, a beer brewery. That'll be at 341 State Street. On 33 Stiles, these are some of the things I mentioned at our Economic Development Breakfast last month. At 33 Stiles, this is a company that owns this building, Colair Properties. It's the same company whom we've been working with that bought the Bristol Myers facility in Wallingford. This is a big-time real estate company that buys these buildings who may be in distress and renovates them. At the same time all that was happening while they were looking at 33 Stiles, we were working in my office with BYK Industries. This is a wholesale distribution company. So what we did was, we put this together, this collaborative effort, and now BYK Industries, this wholesale distribution company, will be moving into and occupying 138,000 square feet in North Haven office styles. So that'll be about 100 jobs there at 33 Stiles. And Colair has been great to work with as we're looking at other properties for them to purchase here in town that can be renovated to bring new tenants in. This is an example of bringing a good small business in. Republic Drive, a great little business park that's nestled off of Sackett Point Road. This is a company that brought in 37 employees, the alternate dental company. And with this business model is, ladies and gentlemen, it's a business model that makes the impressions that dentists will use. If someone needs a crown or a new tooth, or even a gum enhancement, this is the company that the dentists work with to make those molds, and the dentist purchased those molds from this company. This is 8,000 square feet off of State Street. To have a company like McKesson, a wholesale distribution company of medical supplies in North Haven, is a very good thing. McKesson is a national brand, and it's very well-respected across the country. Just before that, I mentioned this last month, Comcast. We brought the Xfinity store in down at Universal Drive years ago, filling out a spot there. This is the technical side, the service technicians that have the vans. Someone calls for a Comcast repair, this is where many of them will come from, out of that facility. 200 Elm Street, this is a great little business park with two new businesses there, and that is right down the street from North Haven High School. 2 Montague Avenue, we opened that up earlier in the year, and this is the Sherwin-Williams Paint Store. I bring this forward because Sherwin-Williams is the largest consumer of the products that the BYK Wholesale Distribution Company distributes. So we have that tie-in here in North Haven. Over on Route 22, we're very excited for those that live in the area, for those that have seen it, this is a senior assistant living facility. I spoke with them three times last week, and sometime in January and February, I'm going to be introducing them to some families in North Haven, families that have senior citizen parents that may not be able to live on their own for much longer. This will be a great facility in an area that, for years, of course, for those that lived there, it was a nursing home. So this is a great company to work with. They want to be part of the community, they want to be integrated into our community, and they want to be very helpful to us in any way they can. I put this up here because this is a small thing, but a big thing in many respects. I'm very proud of the gargano family for keeping the historic charm of one of our buildings on Broadway when they moved their dentistry there. We're looking for more of these types of things in North Haven where some of the historical aspects of these buildings can at least be kept rather than torn down. So this is a great example of that type of initiative. Bagelicious, we've talked about before, they're doing very well, they're very happy in North Haven. And I anticipate, ladies and gentlemen, that by the end of 2019, if not before, this will be totally occupied. Couple of new things going in there. The Agency on Aging, 14,000 square feet will be occupied in this plaza with the Agency on Aging, providing a lot of services for the elderly. There'll be up to 100 people working there in that agency of aging, so that's a great thing for us. And right next door, or right near there, you'll see a DMV Express, and that'll be also a credit union there as part of that. Joe Maruzzi's been great, has put over $7 million into this plaza, and we spent a lot of time with Joe, helping him try to bring clients in. That's a longer view picture of the plaza, which is a little bit over half-occupied right now. And there's another view. Town Fair Tire, you know that, of course, the approvals were given a couple of years ago, their lease is ending over at the end of Stop &amp; Shop. This will be appearing at the site of the old Rustic Oak, and that is under construction right now. Land Rover, I was with the Orsines this past week, they walked me through there. This is a great addition to the town of North Haven with all kinds of updated technology and personal property with a job creation, ladies and gentlemen, of technicians making $85,000 or $90,000. Great job creation in these new car dealerships. This is the site of a major project we're working on. Myself, Chris Ulbrich, and Chris Ulbrich's attorney. This is where we're trying to put Old Dominion Trucking Company at the end of Dodge Avenue, of which there's 72 acres there, about 47 are developable. We have two problems we're working on. A sewer problem, sanitary sewer problem, and also the Department of Energy and Environment have declared that there's protected species there of insects and bugs. We're working with DEEP on that, I head DEEP in my office trying to work through this. This is a major project for us because this was denied over on Elm Street, rightfully so, because of the residential impact having trucks. This is an industrial park of which there are trucking companies. And if we can secure this, this is work in progress, this will be significant jobs for the town and also significant tax revenue. Amazon, right on track. May of 2019 will be the completion date. They've been great to work with. We have two corporate contacts that have been assigned to me in my office. We've had many members of the North Haven Business Community asked to have connections made, which I've done for them. And right now, we see nothing to stop the progress and nothing to stop the completion for May of 2019. And there's another snapshot of that. This is another project that I've been spending a lot of time on. This is the old HID company on 333 State Street. We will be the recipient of moving the Greater New Haven Transit District from another town into North Haven. This is a federal-state-funded project to help build this building. We are working very closely with the Department of Transportation, the DOT, not only on this but on North Haven's train station. And once this gets up and running, this will provide services for the disabled, for the elderly, and will help increase the transportation for all those who are in need of transportation. And we'll probably bring in over 110 jobs here. And the North Haven Train Station. This has been a tremendous work in progress. The good news on this is the DOT has worked so well with us here in Town Hall. The good news on this is the funding for the design phase has been funded and it has been designed. It is moving over to Stiles versus Devine. We introduced the DOT to the Pfizer Group, whom we're working with to develop the back site, the 17 acres in the back. That is future economic development that we're planning out of my office. In the short term, Pfizer and the DOT have gotten together, they've laid out some of the Pfizer property where the overlap will go for the train depot, and right now, the balance of it will have to be funded by the state transportation fund, which, as many of you know, if you follow state government, it had been a fund that had no money in it. But now, there's money that's been infused into it, and the state legislators and the state legislative body have determined a flow of income going in there for the next five to seven years, which could help us on this train station. And another project that I've spent a lot of time on, even this week, is this Cinemark site. So I'm going to give you a work in progress to let you know and those in North Haven TV watching. We're looking at bringing in a hotel group that I've been working with in this office to put a hotel on one of those pads, which will then precipitate some restaurants, maybe some retail, to fill out those pads on that site. So we have worked out with Cinemark, with the hotel group, a conceptual plan that will end up going before planning and zoning, hopefully in March. That would be a major addition to the town of North Haven. You all right, Paul?
Swallowed the wrong way, I'm sorry. Good news is I don't have a cold.
And 84 Washington Avenue, we'll soon see that renovated, and that will be a new financial services company going there. And as Mrs. Veely will attest to, she saw me in action recently. We're looking to bring in a major new restaurant here on this site, and we're close to announcing that here. A restaurant that everyone has heard of. Just so happened when I was there, with the restaurant owner, with the owner of the plaza, and with the owner of the plaza's son, who do I see there? Teresa. And I said to her, now you're going to see me in action on an actual, live, work in progress, economic development project. So I hope to have a major announcement there coming soon. 447 Washington Avenue, this went before P&amp;Z last night, there's a continuation of this. This is that old site across the street from the breakfast nook that is now in the P&amp;Z hearing stages, and this will, or would end up to be, about 150 apartments with retail on the bottom floor of the first building. And once that goes through, finally, that site will be redeveloped after all these years. And that 462 Washington Avenue, the owner of the breakfast nook plaza, Carl DeVia, great guy, he's purchased the plaza, and we're renovating that plaza, and we're getting ready to market that site, and we have some interested tenants there. 585 Washington Avenue, after all of the years that we've tried to get the owner to sell that building, the owner has sold the building, and we're not sure what's going to go there yet, but I know some people who are interested in putting new businesses there, but that is yet to be determined. So the old Sips Coffee Shop has been sold, and that was the problem with marketing the building because nobody wanted to lease it and put in all the cost improvements to it and not own the building. So now it's been sold, and we'll see what happens. From a noteworthy standpoint, I'd like to thank Mr. Sherman Katz. Is he here tonight? He's here. So several years ago, Sherman brought to my attention that every year we light a Christmas tree on the green. And Sherman asked me about the menorah. I said, Sherman, you're absolutely right, we're going to do this every year. And this past weekend, not only were we able to light the Christmas tree with a little girl, ladies and gentlemen, this is public knowledge, and her parents have given me permission to say this, this little beautiful girl, Michaela is her name, she had been diagnosed with lymphoma earlier in the year, and for six months she was in chemotherapy, six months. She's in full remission right now. And we were delighted, we asked her parents if she'd like to light the tree, and she was delighted, the parents were. So the same night that Michaela lit the tree, Sherman Katz, I asked Joel Rudikoff and his wife, Robin, to light the first light of the menorah that night. Sherman has helped me organize that. And Sherman, we have a group of wonderful citizens every night lighting the menorah. So Sherman, thank you for that, and thank you for administering the citizens who are lighting the light every night. Thank you.
I just had a comment on one item on your overview, the fire at Defco Park. I'm glad you included it in your overview because I had contacted Val to put it on the agenda, but she said you would be talking about it. But I had, you know, seen the article in the paper right after Thanksgiving, and I listened to the fire commission meeting, and I agree with your strategy about coming up with the money to replace this equipment. Obviously, the fire department, anyone who's been following town government knows the fire department's been a controversial topic, and reasonable people have disagreed over what new personnel hiring's we need or don't need. So I understand, you know, reasonable people can certainly disagree about that, but I think we all agree that the firefighters that we do have need the equipment that they need, and so I agree with you to go forward for this replacement because from what I've been able to learn about this fire so far, it may, and one of the town attorneys is here, it could take months for all of the layers of insurance and subrogation, if not longer, maybe probably longer, much longer to settle and figure out who's responsible for what. So I would hope that eventually, although the taxpayers will be paying the money upfront to do replacement soon, that at some point there will be some type of reimbursement or insurance or subrogation. I really think we need, as you had alluded to, to commend, I think it was an off-duty police officer who noticed it, and thankfully, he was there guarding property on the other side of the street, I believe. And, you know, so I was a little concerned that no alarm was received.
It's being investigated.
Yeah, yeah. So, like I said, I agree with your strategy here 100%, and I think they did a commendable job to contain the fire with the dangerous chemicals that were there. So I think we really have to commend them for that and get their equipment. So thank you for bringing that to everyone's attention. So I wanted to say that. Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
So that concludes item number four, and now we're on item number five. Sally?
Right. I requested a couple of items on the agenda, and again, your office is always very accepting and putting my requests on the agenda. The first one I put on because it has been our custom in the past that whenever all three members of the Board of Selectmen receive a letter from one citizen, that we generally, it's a custom, I don't know if it's a rule, but it's been our custom, to read it. And because this issue that you alluded to in your opening remarks, the vandalism and letter that was received by Danielle Morphy has gotten a lot of no attention in the town, and so I felt it was appropriate to read her email, which was sent to all three members of the Board of Selectmen on November 23rd. So if I may read that. Okay, it says, "To the Board of Selectmen in the town of North Haven, I have attached," this is from Danielle Morphy, "I have attached a picture of a letter I received in the mail just three days before Thanksgiving. This letter openly threatens me and my family because I actively participate in our town government. The anonymous author of this letter disagrees with my public comments, but takes this disagreement to a disturbing, un-American level. On the same day I received this letter, my mailbox was destroyed in broad daylight while I was home with my two small..." I was home with my two small children. My mailbox sits a few feet up into my driveway. The North Haven Police Department is involved, as well as the U.S. Postal Inspection Service. I have also been in touch with the Freedom of Information Commission because my FOIA complaint was referenced in this letter. I will continue to get any and every authority involved because the safety of my children has been compromised." This letter also directly references a quote from the BOS meeting that was held on Tuesday, 11/13. It was at that meeting that my DTC appointment to the Community Service Commission was voted down, because I am a Democrat, and both Republican selectmen stated they wanted to fill this unfinished Democratic term with a resident who is unaffiliated. The letter was postmarked 11/16. For some reason, last week's BOS meeting and my appointment to the CSC set someone off and incited them to threaten me and my family and destroy my property." You could view the 11/13 BOS meeting, and she has a link to that. "I penned this email on Thanksgiving, because I am grateful for the massive amount of support I have received in just days from a community of people who make up the true essence of our town. This group of people includes the entire DTC, family, friends, neighbors, who regardless of party affiliation, recognize how wrong and disturbing this letter is. Since Monday, I have been unable to sleep, and I have been fearful that my children's safety is now in jeopardy, here in a town that prides itself for being so wonderful and a great place to raise a family. It is now clear that the benefits of living in North Haven are only for a small few who dare not ask questions and express their freedom of speech in a public forum. How sad and how disgusting. It is now time for the town to recognize the very serious problem we have with residents bullying residents. The line had already been crossed, but harassing letters sent via USPS is an actual crime. It is your duty as leadership of this town to put a stop to this. To this board, I am insisting that this letter and harassment be condemned publicly in the papers, on NHTV, and at the BOS meeting in December. We all know this is the right thing to do. Last year, I wrote a letter to the editor outlining the ongoing harassment that residents had been experiencing, simply because they disagreed with a small, loud, and aggressive group of people in town. This fell on deaf ears. Then, at the May 31st, 2017 special town meeting regarding the petition I lawfully submitted, I was told by the first selectman, Mr. Frida, with my husband present, that because I filed the petition about the crumb rubber fields, I should have known these people would come after us. This was an unacceptable response, and we have seen since then, nothing has been done to deter aggressive and unhinged individuals from harassing and threatening residents who simply do not agree with them. While the letter was oddly published in June, it was submitted before that horrible May 31st meeting, in which angry, seething residents in support of crumb rubber fields screamed at residents who didn't agree with them. The aggression was not at all reprimanded, no gavel was used to insist on order and civility. In fact, I had been experiencing some sort of online and in-person intimidation for a few months, and had a very long conversation with Mr. Frida about this prior to the special BOS meeting. I provided him with screenshot evidence of men who were engaging in the bullying. These same men were heckling me, and other women, as well as the third selectman, Sally Bwemi, at the 5/31/17 meeting. These men have continued to harass me. Again, I am reiterating to the entire board that this must be denounced publicly. We have a serious issue in this town with a lack of respect for differing opinions. And there are people here who feel emboldened and entitled to threaten others, simply because they do not agree with them. If this government, if this, excuse me, if this goes unaddressed, you send the message that by attending and participating in our town government, anyone with a differing opinion could be subject to criminal behavior and acts. If once again, not addressed, it sends the message that the leadership is condoning this behavior. As the top elected officials in this town government, I will accept nothing less than public denouncement and an open conversation about this horrible situation. We must have a solution to this sickening problem. I hope you and your families have a safe and joy-filled holiday, but this year, our family was not allowed this sense of peace and happiness, and I hope no one else will have to experience this feeling. I expect our leadership to stand up to all residents of North Haven. Thank you, Danielle Morphy." So that was the letter that we received. A few people came in late, so I will commend the first selectman at the very beginning. Some of you might have missed it. He did very clearly denounce this type of behavior, and I would like to add a few comments along those lines as well. You know, it was very unsettling to me what happened to Ms. Morphy. And quite frankly, as a lifelong resident for 62 years, I was very discouraged and ashamed by it. I would hope that we would have better respect for people's First Amendment rights and free speech. To me, an unsigned letter is cowardly speech. And I think that whoever wrote it, and I don't think we'll ever know who, but whoever wrote it, I think, is listening to this meeting, either now or will be listening to it. And I would just say that this is not the way we want to treat each other here in North Haven. Here in North Haven, we have a Board of Selectmen Town Meeting Form of Government, and every citizen is always encouraged to come to meetings, to participate, to be engaged in their town government. Local government is the one level of government where people can make a difference. People can come to meetings and express opinions and have an impact. And I constantly battle trying to encourage people to come to meetings. And so Ms. Morphy, the past year and a half or so, has been an active outspoken person. And for her to be treated this way, I think it really discourages others from participating. So I join Mr. Frida in condemning this in the highest terms. I just think it's really unfortunate behavior, and I hope that you all agree. Bill, would you like to?
Yeah, I mean, it's one thing to disagree, it's another thing to, you know, to make somebody fearful because they disagree, especially with the children and everything. You know, Danielle lives around the corner from me. I live on Bassett Road, it's up at the top there. And it's very unsettling, too, to have, like, you know, vandalism or, you know, something bad to be happening, what, you know, what really is my neighborhood, you know, where I live, you know? And I walk by, you know, by her house with my dog and everything all the time, you know, down Clinton, or over in Clintonville, and over to, you know, over to Aces and everything. But, you know, so clearly, you know, we want people to disagree, and we want people to be civil in that disagreement, because we're not going to agree on everything all the time. But nobody should ever be, nobody should ever be afraid to express their opinion because there's a threat, or violence, or bullying. And that's, you know, and again, I think that's, you know, I feel that's really from my eight years on the Board of Finance and one year as the select, being as the second or the selectman on the Board of Selectmen. Hopefully, that's the exception and not the rule. I mean, I think in your letter, you've listed other occasions that that's happened. And I'm sorry, not only for this occasion that happened recently, but maybe it happening, you know, where people were unkind or rude based on your opinions on other occasions as well. But, you know, I don't think any of us, all three of us, none of us condone that, and, you know, and that kind of, you know, I think as you correctly said, something that would be, we'd all consider to be un-American, you know?
Right. And I would just, you know, like to add that it really, what happened to Ms. Morphy is not really an isolated incident. I had vandalism at my house last year after the rather tumultuous Board of Selectmen meeting regarding the crumb rubber petition. And I did appreciate that the first selectman sent me a handwritten letter expressing his concerns for my safety at that time, and that was very much appreciated. And, you know, so it really, to say that it was an isolated incident is not totally accurate. So I'm really hoping that tonight, the three of us together condemning this, will put an end to this type of behavior. It's just, as Ms. Morphy said, very un-American, and I hope that we could rise above this and move forward.
And also, you've never heard me say it, but I've had things happen to me also. And I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah.
So we have to strive for civility, respect. This government does not condone it, endorse it, and will not accept it. Thank you.
Okay, the next item that I had put on the agenda, I wanted to talk to you, Mike, because I go to Amazon all the time, I like to see what's going on over there. And I wanted to ask you about the improvements to the roadway that are leading from the built, you know, the curved road, the original driveway to the old, dare I say, Pratt-Winney site that comes out. There's been a lot of improvements there, paving, guardrails, sidewalks, and they kind of fanned it out at the bottom. So now that, I was trying to find, and my house is getting inundated with paperwork from all these meetings, I couldn't find my notes. We had a meeting a couple of years ago, do you remember? The town attorney was there, the Public Works Director, Mr. Bodwell, there was easels up showing maps of the property, and we were talking about the extension of Valley Service Road to this road and all of that, and the contracts that were involved at the time. I couldn't find that file, but I thought I remembered us talking about that road becoming a town road. It, is it, will it be someday?
Yes.
A town road, but it isn't yet.
No.
Okay, so all of these improvements that are being done are not on our dime, I would just, that's my main question.
Jennifer's here, so.
Yeah, I had a couple of other questions. I was glad to see her walk in.
The property has not yet transferred.
Right. I didn't, because that has to be at a town meeting. We have to accept the road, right?
Well, you would have, that's down the road, the acceptance.
Way down, yeah.
After the improvements would be made.
Right.
The acceptance. But the property has not transferred to complete the extension as of yet, because they've just completed final design. So it's actually taken this long with the input of DEEP and Army Corps. So we're nowhere near that yet.
Do you remember the meeting that I'm talking about?
Of course, yes.
And there was a really extensive, I'll have to email you, and maybe you could send me that paperwork from that meeting, because I can't find it.
And I can get you drawings.
I don't need the drawings, I just wanted to email them.
Because the design has, I think the design has changed.
Okay.
Going through the process as well.
Yeah.
Because of the wetlands work that needed to be done and so forth.
So the, who, somebody else is doing all of these improvements to that road?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so, but I will absolutely confirm that.
Okay, that's what I wanted to, and I could touch base with you on that.
Okay.
Okay, so that's really all I wanted to clarify, you know, because I saw quite a lot of road work going on over there, okay?
All right, item number six, we'll get into this, we'd like to read this.
Oh, I'll be happy to. Number six, resolve, the town of North Haven is authorized to dispose of a surplus police department vehicle identified as one 1986 Chevrolet Impala four-door sedan with 88,000 miles and is further identified, who's laughing, as police department vehicle number three, VIN 2G1WB58K279104991. The department anticipates that the vehicle will be auctioned at Central Auto Auction located in Hampton, Connecticut, and their costs and fees to process this vehicle through the auction will not exceed $200. Chief of Police, Thomas McLaughlin, has set a suggested reserve of $3,000 for the vehicle with a final price to be determined and authorized by Edward J. Swankowski, Director of Finance. I'll move the resolution as read.
I'll second that.
In the discussion, I'll just mention that when you, anytime you see, ladies and gentlemen, where these resolutions have a reserve, that means that's the minimum amount. We won't fall below the minimum, which is the reserve, the $3,000. As Tom White would know, he's been involved with this for years, when you do these, you probably get more, but that's the reserve, $3,000. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion?
It's pretty good, pretty good, it's an '86 with only 88,000 miles.
I know, I wondered how that could be. What kind of vehicles do you have? Anybody else want to make?
I might want to buy it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. All right, item number seven, resignations, appointments.
The first one is the reappointment of David Carney, 56 Hayward Road, Hampton, Connecticut, 06514, as the Animal Control Officer for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2019.
I'll second.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? They do a great job, David and Crystal, you'll see next, on the animal control side, so I thank them for their efforts. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll move for the reappointment of Crystal Rashba, 76 Clifton Street, Wallingford, as the Assistant Animal Control Officer for a one-year term to expire December 31st, 2019.
Second that as well.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one is the reappointment of Claudia Gilletti, Democrat, 11 Falcon Crest Drive, to the Commission on Aging for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2021.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. In the discussion, I just want to mention where we see reappointments, these are people who've been contacted, and they've asked to stay on. Valerie handles that for us in our office. I truly enjoy working with Claudia. We have meetings occasionally with the Aging Commission. Thank you for your efforts, Claudia, so I will support this also. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The, I'll move the reappointment of Amy Lund, 30 Melissa Drive, to the Commission on Aging for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2021.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, Amy, thank you for staying on this commission. I'll support this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Next item is, that I'll move is the reappointment of Peter Criscola, Democrat, 54 Fieldstone Court, to the Building Board of Appeals for a five-year term to expire December 31st, 2023.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Peter, for agreeing to be reappointed.
Next is the reappointment of Ronald Bathrick Jr., 37 Susan Lane, to the Community Services Commission for a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2021. And I have a question about this. Do we need a resignation from the Ethics Commission first?
Well, we've already, Val, we've already been working on that.
Right, this is a reappointment to the, to this commission.
Right.
Community Services.
Right, but, so the issue that you brought to light was that no official could serve on the Board of Ethics, so the conflict arises from his service on the Board of Ethics. The conflict doesn't arise from his service on this commission. And I know that, that's one of the reasons why I'm here, actually, because I know you had the question about whether or not a resignation letter, I mean, we have a very unusual circumstance. We've not had this circumstance before. Technically, they're not resigning. They have been contacted, they've agreed to step down. The three individuals on the Board of Ethics that have the conflict, as they are officials and cannot serve, because they are serving in other capacities.
Right.
So technically, they're not resigning. They're stepping down, so that way, someone who is not an official can take their place in the membership.
Okay, so these, this individual is no longer on the Ethics Commission, is it?
No, he is not.
Oh, okay, that's what I.
The issue has been addressed that you raised.
I wasn't aware of that. I just want, can I give a little background?
Absolutely.
What, as, after the November 13th Board of Selectmen meeting, I started to do some research in general on appointments to boards and commissions in town, and I was looking at the charter and some applicable state statutes and applicable ordinances, and it was brought to my attention that you cannot serve, you're not eligible to serve, make sure I'm saying it right. According to the Ethics Ordinance, you're not eligible to serve on the Ethics Commission if you also hold another.
Position.
Another position or are an official.
Exactly.
So that affected three people that were on the Ethics.
Three people, yes.
Right, and so, so you, so you don't see any problem with the fact that a few months ago, I think it was, we appointed one of the members of the Ethics Commission to serve on the Police Commission to fill an unexpired term? That that's not invalidated by the fact that she, because the Ethics came before. You see, you see those fine distinction on Drager Drive?
It's not because... It's not because, again, when you read that definition of official, it's that an official that how can't serve on the Board of Ethics. At the time that, that she was serving on the Board of Ethics, she wasn't an official. She, so it's kind of the reverse.
Right.
If had it occurred temporally the other way, then that's the issue.
Right, well, you and I had a very long conversation about this.
We did, we went through.
I agreed with you, we agreed with each other, and I interpreted that way as well, but I, I felt that it was prudent to just ask the question anyway to make sure that we, we didn't make an error with, with that. So I agree.
The appointment on the.
If it went the other way, it would have been.
Exactly.
Messier, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, thank you. So moving forward, I will move the reappointment of Ronald Bathrick Jr. to the Community Services Commission for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one is a motion to reappoint, I'll move to reappoint Christine Oris, 15 Allen Road, to the Community Service Commission for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2021.
I'll second.
Okay, Christine's here this evening. Thank you for coming. Thank you for agreeing to stay on, Christine, and we will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And I will move for the reappointment of Ann Benowitz, 15 Marion Drive, to the Central Regional Tourism District for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2021. I didn't know we had a tourism district.
Ann's our representative, so we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
You could take him to the brewery. Sorry, sorry. I, oh, no, did we vote?
We were contemplating when we can connect Ann with the brewery, so.
Okay.
But anyway, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Next was a motion to reappoint Michael J. Frida, 90 Highland Park Road, to the Economic Development Commission for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2021.
I object to this. I don't think he's qualified.
No. He's always at the brewery. I'll second it. That's the last one, last one.
All right.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think you should abstain.
Yeah, you probably should abstain. I abstain.
I'm going to be abstaining from the next one.
Okay.
Next item to move is the reappointment of Richard Lopresti, 175 Senil Hill Road, to the Economic Develop Commission, Economic Development Commission for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2021.
I'll second that, and I'd also like to thank Richard, who recently retired from the United Illuminating Company, and he and I worked very closely together, a wonderful man. Thank you for your service as a volunteer. All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. My abstention is not any indication of any, Richard does a great job, I'm abstaining for personal reasons. Yes, okay.
Okay, next.
I'll move the reappointment of Radha Prasad, 120 Blakesley Avenue, to the Economic Development Commission for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2021.
I'll second that.
Radha, thank you very much for agreeing to stay on. We'd like working with you very much, and we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one is a motion, I'll make a motion to also for the Economic Development Commission, reappoint Alan J. Sturtsch, 136 Hartley Street, for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2021.
Second.
Okay, I'd like to say Alan's here. Alan, thank you for your service, thank you for your service to the Lions Club in North Haven. We appreciate those efforts, and we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion for the reappointment of Carrie Kennelly, 36 Pool Road, to the Board of Ethics for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2021.
I'll second that.
Are we okay with this one? We already checked that out, okay, so, all right. So we have a motion and a second. Carrie's been on this board for quite some time. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is a motion to, I'll make a motion to reappoint Nancy Letty, 21 Winchester Drive, to the Housing Authority Board for a five-year term to expire December 31, 2023.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move the appointment of Leonard Thomas, 7 Upper State Street, to the Water Pollution Control Authority to fill the unexpired term of Scott Abercrombie, term to expire December 31, 2019.
I'll second.
Leonard's here this evening, and he brings to this WPCA a great deal of expertise. He actually works for the Wallingford Water Pollution Control Authority. He knows as much about water pollution control authorities as anybody. So thank you, Leonard, for agreeing to serve on this commission.
Yes, I agree. His resume was impressive, so.
We'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Next motion will be for the appointment, that I'll make for the, is for the appointment of the Reverend Wayne Lavender, PhD, 75 Clintonville Road, to the Community Services Commission to fill the unexpired term of Carol Franzchat for a term to expire on December 31, 2019.
I'll second.
Wayne is here, and I was, this is the commission seat that was the source of controversy last month. So I support Wayne 100% because as soon as Wayne came in to take over as senior pastor at the United Methodist Church on Route 22, he reached out for me. We met at an event, and I was immediately struck with how genuine and sincere and how passionate he wanted to be about our community. And his background, he's a PhD, he's got degrees in various other, other areas, senior public policy. He's been a great asset to this community. Where is he? Wayne, are you here? Right there. This man has been a wonderful asset to our community, and I totally endorse this selection, so.
Impressive service throughout the world.
And the unaffiliate that I had has graciously stepped aside. She was a managing partner at a, at a large public accounting firm, in addition to her other responsibilities. But Wayne, when your nomination came forward, thank you for what you've done for our community so far, and thank you for joining us. I support it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mike. I'll meet with the brewery.
Yeah, okay, Wayne, good, thank you. Thank you.
First round's on mic.
And I think it's my turn. A motion to appoint Elizabeth Beacom, 27 Hartley Street, to the Inland Wetlands Commission as an alternate to fill the unexpired term of Frank Bumpstead, term to expire December 31, 2021.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
No, because this is an appointment, we have the resume, I just, I reviewed her resume again, very impressive and very qualified, so I fully support this, and.
I agree, it's a very impressive resume.
Yep.
So Elizabeth, thank you, if you're here, if you are here tonight, there you are. Thank you for agreeing to serve, and we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
And then the next appointment, or motion for an appointment is for, and I'll make a motion, to appoint Kenneth Quick, 59 Winchester Drive, to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate to fill the unexpired term of William O'Hare, term to expire December 1, 2019. I think we also had a great resume for, for Mr. Quick, for Kenneth.
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bond releases, who would like to read those?
I'll do the, the first one. It is P. 16-25, 392 State Street, White Wood Apartments, release the entire bond balance in the amount of $2,500 with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I reviewed the report signed by the town engineer. This was a pond dredging that was completed with no other outstanding conditions, so I would move this release.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Property tax refunds.
No, we have to do.
We got one more refund, sorry.
I'll do P. 16-09, 120 Quinnipiac Avenue, First Fuel, release the entire bond balance in the amount of $9,000 with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, I reviewed the, the report from the town engineer, it was an as-built with all conditions satisfied, so I would move for the release of this bond as well.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Property tax, number nine, refunds.
I'll move the property tax refund, as listed in the agenda.
I'll second, I'll second those releases, or those refunds, rather.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, the next regularly scheduled meeting with Board of Selectmen is Thursday, January 4, 2019, here at 7:00 in this conference room. And now we're at the point, item number 10, public comment. Yes, sir, Tom.
I just wanted to say, number six, according to the VIN number, that's a 2007 Chevy Impala, so.
You looked it up?
Yeah, you might want to.
That makes more sense.
Get that corrected.
All right. Coming from a man who knows. All right, Teresa.
Do I get my address and my name out of this one? Oh, it's formal, okay. I forget, Teresa Ranciatovelli, 100 Bassett Road. I'm going to, first of all, on a lighter note, when Planning and Zoning approve that brewery, there is a tasting room. I want everyone to know that. There is a small tasting room. I was with the First Selectmen when he was made aware of, of the letter to Danielle, and I will say that his reaction was one that was absolutely expected. He was shocked, he was disgusted. It is unacceptable, like Sally and like Mr. Piper, I'm also, I'm also a native of North Haven, and I will say that a Freedom of Information request is a normal thing in this town. It's been going on for years. It's something that is one of the basis of our, of our democracy. I've asked for plenty in all of my years here, and like they stated, and like our First Selectmen reiterated, there's no place for that in North Haven. The May 31st meeting was, I think, a turning point. The turf fields, look, they're in. So I'm going to address this, not really to the Board of Selectmen, but to the people out there. They're there, okay? You won. If that's what this letter is about, and it looks like it is, you know, go home, look at yourself in the mirror. If you have kids, go look at your kids. If you have a mother or father, go look at them, and then think about telling them what you did with that letter, because you're not a man, you're not a good person. There's room to make yourself better, but that's not what we do in this town. Danielle has two small children, she's a great asset, she's coming up, she's going to be a mover and a shaker in this town, she'll be an asset, she already is. But to those people out there who, who are doing that, just stop. You don't belong in the town. And please look at the three people who are sitting up here. That's what, that's what makes our town a great place. As you see, Mike and I have a great relationship, Republican, Democrat, independent, no matter what you are, but don't, don't behave like that anymore, and if you really have to be like that, move somewhere else. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Scott Friedman, 17 Cooper Road. First and foremost, I just want to thank the Board of Selectmen for all speaking out to condemn the letter that was sent to Danielle Morphy. I wrote an email after the letter was sent, and I also had called and wrote a letter after the May 31, 2017 Board of, the special town meeting. And all I can say is that I've also paid attention throughout the entire year between that May 31, 2017 town meeting and now, and I've seen too many instances of people's information being shared on quasi-public, you know, town community forums, on Facebook, I would say outright bullying online. The Board of Selectmen meeting was completely unacceptable. I made that known to the First Selectmen's office at the time. I frankly was relatively new to the town. I moved here in 2014. The 2017 timeframe around the crumb rubber was about the first time that I paid attention and attended town meetings, and I was thoroughly disgusted. To me, we need more effective coordinating of those meetings. This is a far smaller group and a far more contained group, but when we do have controversial issues, and I'm not just talking about the crumb rubber fields, but also the school resource officers, whether it be online or in person, we need the, the sort of civility and respect that you've been talking about to be pushed throughout the, you know, especially the public events, and I just appreciate that you spoke out tonight, all three of you forcefully. This is unacceptable, and it's really not the behavior we want in our town. So thank you so much.
Okay, Lisa Burton.
Lisa Burton, Larson Drive. I do appreciate the three of you condemning the bullying that's going on in town. I'm not sure that people really realize how subtle it might be. This sign was a sign that I put in my front yard in the summer of 2017, probably June, July, right after that meeting, because I was disturbed by the climate, and I felt I needed to make a stand about the values that I believed in. Ironically, or maybe not so ironically, once the campaign season started, in September, I put a Sturtsch Buehme sign next to my "We Believe" sign, and it was shortly after, within a week or so, that that first sign was completely demolished. I did reach out and email Mr. Frida about that incident. I don't know if you recall that, but you had said that you condemned it and that you would be out to talk to my neighbors. So fast forward to this campaign season, and this is what concerns me most, is that the vandalism seems to occur during campaign season. So once again, my sign is up, living fine. I ordered two because I had, was concerned that the first one would be damaged, so now I have my second sign out, and once I put a sign up for Teresa next to it, within a day, this is what somebody did. The anger and the rage that this represented, that somebody did this in my front yard, is unconceivable to me.
Did you call the police?
I did not call the police this time.
You should, you really should, because we'll, we'll investigate it.
What are you going to investigate?
Well, I mean, we're, you have to file a complaint, and our police will patrol the area.
Well, the only times I've called the police is when my car's been broken into. That was two times. So for a sign, it's, it is not the dollar value, it is the intention that concerns me.
So I would say if someone's watching who has, and I have had my own signs vandalized, so I can certainly identify with having signs vandalized. Please, folks, we're trying to, we have to have a civil society here. There's a, there's a free speech expression. People are entitled to their opinions. The town does not condone signs being vandalized, and it's just not something that is North Haven. We shouldn't, we shouldn't really be doing this. So whoever's watching, if someone did that, it's unacceptable.
And again, it's a cowardly thing. It's done when I'm not home. If you have an issue with my beliefs, knock on my door, I'd be happy to have an exchange with you. But while you do it when I'm not there, it's just mind-blowing to me.
Okay, Jenny Colwell, you had, you had your hand up also? Okay.
Oh, by the way, if anybody else wants to put signs in their front yard, you can go to Etsy.com, which is where I got this one, or the actual website is SignsOfJustice.com. I would love to see our town plastered with them.
I think, I hope this sign up for everybody, for sure. And I think, I didn't want to steal your thunder earlier, like, you know, because I
And I think, I didn't want to steal your thunder earlier, like, you know, because I didn't know, you know, when this happened or what you were gonna say, but the very bottom line, I think, is very appropriate for what we've discussed tonight. I think, why don't you read the bottom line for us, which is really what you're talking about?
And justice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere.
So I think that's really very appropriate for everything we're talking about tonight.
Jenny Colwell, sixty-nine, Kimberly Circle. I also want to thank you all for addressing this issue, and I also want to agree with what many people are saying here. It's not an isolated incident. I served on the Board of Ed for six years, and there were multiple times where people disagreed with decisions we were making or things we were debating. And in general, I never felt afraid. However, there were two meetings in which I actually did fear for my safety, and the first one was when we first started talking about the turf fields. There was, the auditorium had been filled with people who were told to come and really push the board into voting for the turf fields. It was a loud meeting. There were multiple times where Anita really tried to pull people in, and, you know, people were yelling. It was a place where I actually was afraid. The second time was after there was conversation around the mascot, and we had a meeting specifically around, you know, debating where people stood on the issue of the mascot and changing the name, the Indian logo. And at that meeting, the meeting actually had to be stopped because people were starting to fight. There was a police officer there. I had to unplug a microphone because people were screaming. At the very next Board of Ed meeting, we had a family came in that was a Native American family, and the mother got up and said, "Please solve this issue, and please do it quickly, because we're getting death threats in our mailbox." And to me, it's inconceivable that it would get to that level, that anyone could feel that passionate about a mascot, that they would threaten a family. And I will tell you, that bullying of the board was effective, because we never voted on the Indian mascot. So I do think maybe, you know, with the sign being, you know, with things like signs, or maybe there needs to be a process for people reporting these types of bullying things. I will say, last weekend, there was an online discussion around some of the Catholic Church, and a couple of residents discussed the possibility of a mosque being, replacing Saint Barnabas, and there was a comment made that if a mosque goes up, we should burn it to the ground, and a couple of people agreeing. To me, that is not something that should be happening, and it is, it happens enough that people are afraid. When I talked about doing the petition for the SRO, you know, to have the SRO issue go to referendum, I was warned by people, "Don't do it, you'll be threatened." And so there should not really be that fear of speaking out, and I'm not sure what the answer is. I'm glad that you all have spoken out, but I think maybe there needs to be a process for people to be able to report things like this without necessarily going through a police report, because I think it is true, you're like, what, the police aren't gonna be able to do anything about that.
Really, if you're threatened, you should be calling the police department. That is who has to be called.
But a vague threat, you know, the mosque being burned down, there's no mosque there.
What was that, on Facebook?
It's on Facebook.
That should be reported to Facebook. Somebody should have reported that. They should be shutting that down.
Well, maybe, again, I think people don't know what to do when these things happen. It's not, I've never experienced that before.
Well, Facebook has a mechanism where you can report that abusive behavior.
That's why I never go on Facebook. I don't even know what it is.
And that's not really, I don't want to debate all the issues. My point is that if we're saying it's unacceptable, then residents need to know what to do when it happens. As a board member, you know, it's really up to the board to deal with the issues of threats, and, you know, unfortunately, the Board of Ed just never addressed the issue again, because it got too heated. And that shouldn't be the case, because, you know, you take Behavior 101, when you're dealing with people and behavior, if a behavior works, it gets reinforced and it continues. And I think that's part of what's happened in North Haven, is that some of that bullying behavior has led to people getting what they want, and they think it's effective. So they're gonna continue. So unless there's a process or a way to address these behaviors, I think it's possible that it may continue. So I don't know what the answer is, but I do think that it's something that needs to be looked at. Maybe the Board of Ethics looks at it. So, just a suggestion.
Sherman Katz.
Sherman Katz, Sherwood Drive. I've lived in North Haven for fifty years. I've probably been one of the most controversial people in the town over fifty years. I've talked for and against subjects that people were very emotional about. Turf fields, I was one of the first ones to speak against it. I brought Miancy Alderman in, a scientist. That's what this microphone is for. If you want to talk about it, if you have a problem with it, you talk about it right There are many subjects that I've talked about, and before I spoke, I thought, should I take the chances and speak, because I live in North Haven, my address is public, I'm all around town. Should I be fearful that someone's going to bother me, bother my property, bother my family? And I'm an American, I served in the military. I have an honor with discharge. The thing is, this is my country and my town, so I'm not afraid to say what I want to say, as long as I'm not hurting someone. Enough about that. You know, I have some very crusading subjects, and you're gonna hear it again. One was the turf fields, and the other is the registration of vehicles, and lately, Hamden, who, I don't have a lot of respect for Hamden, because they're really in a bad position, but they've seen the light, and they are now going after cars that are not registered properly in Hamden. These are cars that are registered out of town, out of state, so you don't pay taxes on it. I have two vehicles. It costs me a thousand dollars a year to register my car, to pay my taxes. I have friends that register their cars in Florida, Vermont, Old Saybrook, so they pay less Vermont taxes, or no taxes at all. I had thought that there was maybe a hundred thousand dollars' worth of uncaptured taxes out there, but lately, I'm in a school van, what's called a school bus monitor, I ride with, especially these children. So I'm all over town, and now I'm getting into areas where we have the multifamily units, the apartment houses. You'll see fifty cars in there, New York, Pennsylvania, Florida, Vermont, Texas, Alaska. They're registered out of this town. We have private citizens who have one-family houses in this town, who get all the benefits of this town, police, fire, public service, but they want to register their cars in Florida. I have friends that register their cars in Florida, and I've told them, sooner or later, I'm gonna get this town to go after you, and I don't care if you hate me for it. You're not, you're stealing from every one of you people that are sitting here right now. If you register your car out of state... We have a retired teacher, she has a piece of property in Maine, she goes here three times a year, registers her car in Maine, and she complains about North Haven services. So Mike, I implore you, please, you are breaking the law by not enforcing the law, and I ask everyone who feels the same way to call the town hall, talk to Val, tie up the lines, send your emails, keep them busy, make them hire three more people to handle your calls, because you talked about eight hundred thousand dollars' worth of fire equipment. Conservatively, there's four hundred thousand dollars' worth of taxes that you're not collecting. I can take you right now and show you a hundred vehicles, and I can do it in twenty minutes.
So I brought this up at a mayor's meeting, because we mentioned this last month.
Thank you.
And no other mayor, First Selectmen's, doing it, but Hamden, to your point, is. I met with Kurt.
West Haven used to do it too.
So they stopped it. We did it once, we collected monies, we stopped it, because it was becoming an infringement on people's civil rights. There were snapshots being taken in driveways, every driveway, every house was being taken, every license plate. People were concerned, they were nervous, they didn't know what it was. It was a very aggressive, there was a very aggressive adversarial approach, and we talked about threats, threatening people that they'd have to pay the money back. It was something that I didn't want at the time. We did collect maybe sixty or seventy thousand dollars, but the approach, when you see a family looking out their driveway or their front window, and then there's a snapshot being taken of their cars like this, that's an unsettling feeling. So there's always a backstory, ladies and gentlemen, to what may appear to be something so simple. Even Hamden is proceeding slowly now, because they realize, I think they realize that a lot of these out-of-plate cars are students of Quinnipiac, so they, you know, they may want to talk to Quinnipiac University first, but, you know, it's not easy. When we first did it, we thought that it was just, all right, we see a Florida plate, we track it down, and they pay the taxes. No. Every house in North Haven will have a car come by at all hours of the day with pictures being taken of their driveway and their cars. That is the problem with this, let alone the problem with a North Haven resident who has a company in Hamden, who the car is registered in Hamden, him being harassed in North Haven because he's being demanded to go to Hamden City Town Hall and demand to get a three-year reimbursement from those car taxes, and then go back to North Haven and register the car. You think Hamden's assessor is gonna just write him a check for three years back? No. It's very complicated. I don't disagree with Sherman. We go back from the first day I entered this town hall in the Board of Finance, Sherman Katz and I, we go back right from day one. We've been on the same side of issues, and we've been on opposite side of issues. I have a tremendous amount of respect for him, but this is not as easy as it appears, and that's why I'm hesitant this time around.
So I always think that the state has a similar problem, where people are claiming that they're Florida residents but really don't live, from an income tax standpoint, don't live a half a year in Florida, more than a half a year in Florida. So I'm just like, you know, you know, so, you know, I mean, it becomes very hard to police whether they actually satisfy the rule where they're more out of the state than in the state.
We're not shutting the door on it, though, Sherman. There's a way to do it without infringing on people and scaring people. We will try to figure it out. Mr. Sturtz, you had your hand up.
I have some suggestions. I'll talk to you.
Yeah, okay, okay. Very good. Alan, how are you?
Alan Sturtz, one thirty-six Hartley Street. The issue with the cars goes back, I tried it when I was tax collector eleven years ago, and it is very difficult. You could hire an out-of-town company to match up records without going by and clicking a camera, but in the long run, it's, the juice may not be worth the squeeze. On the other issue that we've been discussing tonight, after the July thirty-first, two thousand seventeen meeting, someone mentioned we did go into the campaigning season, and this issue of civility did come up quite a bit. We all talked about it at the League of Women Voters debate, and the four of us were all in agreement. After the election, I stood up here and said that now it's up to you all to maintain that level of civility, and I was so proud of this board tonight, when the three of you unanimously spoke up against this hate speech, this un-American activity of trying to quash a person's First Amendment rights. It just has no place in this town, in this state, in this country.
Alan, I have to say, I think I thought you and I were a good model when we ran against each other.
We did.
It was civil all the way through.
And that's the way, and that's the way it should be. I think Sally mentioned earlier in the meeting, reasonable people can disagree, and that's entirely the way it should be. So I want to thank you all for that, and my wife mentioned something to me just before, maybe there should be, for all public meetings, at least maybe at the beginning of the year, for each of the boards and commissions, especially the ones that draw a large audience, what will be and will not be acceptable behavior, definitely at an open town meeting. That should be there.
Is June here? Is June here?
Yeah.
Oh, there's June, okay. Yeah.
And I do agree, maybe it should go to the Ethics Commission for a list of rules of...
We'll take a look at that.
Of behavior. I also did read, saw a copy of the letter that went to Danielle, and I have to disagree with the person that wrote that letter. Danielle is not the embarrassment. The person that wrote it is the embarrassment to the town of North Haven. Thank you all very much.
Jill Mallor Kesselman, twenty-two fifty-five Ridge Road. Hopefully somebody got that. I want to echo many of the sentiments already expressed tonight. I want to thank all three of you for condemning the disgusting anonymous letter that Danielle received, but sadly, illustrated by several previous speakers, this is not an isolated incident. It makes us all feel much more comfortable to think that it's an isolated incident, but it clearly is not. I have only lived in North Haven, I've been a property owner for three years, but I've only lived here for two years, and one of my first experiences with North Haven was a flyer in my mailbox inviting me to attend a meeting organized by the Blue Hills Neighborhood Association to organize the neighborhood to stop the building of the Slate School. No one's mentioned that here tonight. Those meetings were appalling to me. I don't have a pony in the Slate School, I don't have young children, so I don't really care personally what happens, and I don't live on that street. It's now built and operating, and I recently visited, and it's wonderful, but the behavior at those meetings was very similar to the behaviors at the crumb rubber meetings. People, character assassination, people speaking in disgusting ways about the people who wanted to build this school to improve our community. So that was my first experience with North Haven, and frankly, I thought, what the hell did I get myself into in moving to North Haven, and sort of wished I was back in Hamden. Then crumb rubber came about, and now my friend receives this threatening letter. So I think that, while condemnation, I applaud, and I am so pleased at all of your response, I think that's only one part. I think the first step is really acknowledging that this is a bigger problem in our community than we might like to admit, and that we need to think, as Jenny suggested, about ways that we can address it beyond condemning it. I would like to say to everyone out there watching and in here, that if you see or hear about bullying behavior, not only by kids, but also by adults, you can't be silent, because silence is complicity, and you need to speak out against it, and you need to support those who are being bullied, not support the bully by remaining silent. I'd also like to echo Jenny's thoughts about creating some sort of a process to not only deal with it, but also maybe to promote anti-bullying among adults, and maybe some thought should be given to the development of an anti-bullying commission, because we don't want, if we don't want to be that kind of community, then we need to nip that in the bud. We don't want sort of trickle-down bullying happening in North Haven. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Nancy Barrett, one Crestview Drive. So I have three different topics. The first is the reaction to the harassment letter sent to Danielle Morphy, as well as the vandalism. So I'd like to just reiterate, I was very glad to hear that the threatening letter and act of vandalism has garnered the attention of both the police, the local press, as well as our Board of Selectmen, so I'd like to thank you each for individually, as well as collectively, denouncing this hateful speech and unacceptable behavior. I would just like to say publicly that our voices, when respectful and do not incite violence, should never be silenced, either by elected officials, by the omissions in the press, or by acts of intimidation. Anonymous letters, email posts, and vandalism intended to inflict emotional distress and silence opposition are acts of cowardice and reflect a weakness of character. The public of North Haven fully expects our elected leaders to publicly condemn such acts. We also expect that you should have a zero-tolerance policy for bullying, threats, harassment, and we expect that you should moderate language and behavior at meetings. So I would just like to put that out there. And lastly, for anyone who is considering or who has actually... who is considering or who has actually participated in damaging signs or any other type of property, private property, the state of Connecticut deems criminal trespassing and vandalism as criminal mischief, which depending upon the degree, could be first to fourth, can either be a felony or a misdemeanor offense. In the case of criminal mischief in the third degree, the value of the property is not at issue. All that is needed to be arrested for this crime is that the perpetrator intentionally or recklessly damaged tangible property. The third-degree criminal mischief is a Class B misdemeanor carrying a six-month maximum jail penalty and up to $1,000 in fines. The intentional damage to the Morphy's mailbox represents an ongoing police investigation, and the person or persons responsible will be prosecuted to the full extent of the law. I can only hope that by collectively shining a light of condemnation on this shameful behavior, that we provide a deterrent to future acts of cowardice. That's the first issue. The second one is, is much quicker. So I would just like to request that, in the interest of full transparency, the White Paper Report and recommendations from the Fire and Medical Services Workshop Group, could you please make that available online?
Yeah, I don't know if we have that. I think the Fire Commission was distributing that. You were there at the commission meeting.
Yeah, well, they said they were going to put it online after the Fire Commission received it, which must have happened by now.
We'll check that.
Definitely happened.
Yeah, because, again, since it wasn't formally presented for the viewers to watch, and it isn't made available online, and it was only distributed to the Fire Commission, the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Finance, I, I just think that that's a, that's an important piece of information that I think could clear up a lot of misconceptions about the Fire Department.
And people might want to review it before they come to the next Board of Finance.
I think that would be a great idea.
All right, we'll work towards getting that online, Bill.
Great. Okay, thank you so much. Okay, the third topic is the Police and Fire Communication System. So just by way of reviewing for everyone out there that isn't familiar with the background on this, part of the $18 million Police Headquarters renovation includes a $4 million purchase of new radio communications equipment for police and fire personnel, which will eliminate so-called dead spots for radio communication throughout the town. As part of its upgrade to the town of North Haven's communication system, the town has modified its existing site at Ridge Road School solely due to its geolocation. Two towers were removed from the roof of the school and replaced by a massive tower capable of supporting all antennas needed for the system. In addition, one, one-meter high-performance microwave antenna, or a circular dish, was added to provide public safety-grade connectivity between the school and the police headquarters. All equipment was installed in a new 10-foot by 12-foot environmentally-controlled shelter at the front of the school in a space that originally housed the emergency standby generator for the Public Safety Communication System. I was informed today that the BOE Director of IT, Jen Kaznuski, that the tower and antenna play no role in either the functioning or supporting of the Wi-Fi system at the Ridge Road School. So this is solely for the purpose of the Police and Fire Communication System. So in July, when all of the construction started at Ridge Road without any announcement, I requested quantified evidence from the Quinnipiac Valley Health District that proved that the specifications of this new emergency communication system are in fact safe. I received a very short and, to me, unacceptable answer, and my request thankfully was passed along by the Board of Selectmen to the state. And in October, representatives from the State of Connecticut Department of Health Environmental and Occupational Health Assessment Program indicated that they do not have the expertise to critically review the exposure calculations included in the report provided by the vendor, New England Radio Consultants. However, they did reference the 1996 maximum FCC radio frequency limits and acknowledge important data gaps in the scientific research on radio frequency exposure and health effects. So I don't know if anybody hears a, a common theme here, but once again, it seems like we are dependent upon a vendor, in this case from Osiphe, New Hampshire, to ensure the safety of a product that we are exposing our children to on a daily basis. The FCC guidelines for RF exposure, which are artificially high in order to protect against thermal heating, are strictly for short-term acute exposures to humans, not the long-term chronic low-level exposures that are common today. Many physicians and scientists have offered expert testimony and legislative hearings throughout the country that all unequivocally state that wireless radiation has biological effects for all life forms, human, animal, insects, and microorganisms. The FCC has no medical or biological expertise, and due to its many conflicts of interest, has ignored countless scientific warnings about the cumulative effects of EMR and links to various epidemics such as cancer, diabetes, kidney failure, heart failure, psychiatric disorders in humans. So if we cannot get a well-informed, unbiased assessment to determine the non-thermal effects of radio frequency exposure, how can anyone confidently state that this new communication system in North Haven is safe? As luck would have it, just this past Monday, U.S. Senator Richard Blumenthal, along with other members of the Senate Commerce Committee, held a press conference in Hartford to announce the campaign to determine whether new wireless technology is in fact safe, and is asking the federal government for proof that the 5G small towers, which would be placed near schools, libraries, and homes, and emit radio frequency, will not harm Americans or the, or the environment. This is a quote from Senator Blumenthal. "The stark, simple fact is that the health hazards are unknown and unstudied, and that is a sign of neglect and disregard on the part of the Federal Communications Commission that is unacceptable. We need to know whether 4G and 5G technology can call neurolog- cause neurological problems, DNA damage, cancer, and other diseases." So it appears as though three factors have led to this potential perfect storm: the combination of obsolete federal and state communication guidelines, exceptionally high FCC radiation thresholds, sometimes 10 to 100 times higher than in other countries, and exponential technology growth in a very highly profitable telco industries. And that has led to the deployment of these 5G wireless systems. It's also new technology that has never been licensed by the FCC for civilian use ever before, but it nonetheless maximizes cell tower density and the biological impact. So in other words, the two questions that I posed back in July of this year remain unanswered. First, are these new emergency communication systems specifications safe in the short and long term for residents, students, teachers, and school staff? And second, how could a bonded project, such as the $18 million Police Department renovation and communication system upgrade, have received approval without an environmental impact statement performed on this specific technology package by individuals with expertise in medicine, physics, or public health? So that's my question.
But the studies don't exist. I mean, I think you could do an environmental impact study, and you won't get any more answers than you've already got.
Well, I think-
So I think you have a need right now that's clear in terms of a public safety need that that tower addresses. So I think you've made a, this decision's been made based on, you know, based on the best available information or the lack of any information that we need to-
Well, I think it's, it's the best available information, and I'm not sure that we're necessarily going to the best sources. Our State Department of Public Health, by their own admission, is not qualified to evaluate this package.
They're not getting any help from the federal government either. You've read, do you have a cellphone?
I do.
What kind do you have?
It's an iPhone.
I still have a flip phone, because there's a lot of evidence that iPhones will do the same thing.
I, I use it very, very little, very sparingly.
I mean, but a lot of people use them, and our kids use them so frequently.
Absolutely. I agree.
Because you're beaming that right into your iPhone.
So if you agree to that, then-
That's why I have a flip phone.
It's not a leap. It's not a leap.
I've taken a prudent short-term one by giving myself a-
So you keep yourself safe, but the kids, you know-
But see, I think, you know, that's another good example.
You're supporting my point. Thank you.
But that's another good example, though, that, you know, I think us, most people as individuals, including members of my family, have opted for, you know, iPhone, iPhones or Androids or whatever.
Absolutely. The convenience of wireless is undeniable, but at what cost? That is the question. At what cost? And to have, have all of our confidence based upon a report that our vendor is providing to us, I just don't feel as though that's an objective source of information, just as I didn't feel as though the vendors of the Crumb Rubber infill were an objective source of information for this town purchasing. And so I would just like to call this to your attention, because I, I still have concerns, and I'm not just speaking for myself, I'm speaking for many, many people, not only in my neighborhood, but people that work at Ridge Road, people whose children attend the school. And all of this construction was done without any communication to either the residents or the people that work at the school. And I, I just feel as though there should be some level of transparency about this information, and to the extent that we can, seek out better information so that we can really be looking into preserving the, the health of our, our community. So thank you very much.
Mary White.
Mary White Summerling. First and foremost, I wanted to say that I support our town meeting form of government, which enables us to have more free speech opportunities than, say, a mayoral town council, Board of Aldermen form of government, where an Alderman represents you and your ward or district, and it's those folks that makes, make decisions for you and your ward or district. We may not agree with one another, but we must respect one another. And I want to say it is unacceptable to harass, bully, vandalize, and send anonymous letter, threatening letters, just because you don't like what the person's saying, or you don't like them personally. Our First Amendment right to free speech gives us all the right to speak, and the attempt to silence Danielle is an assault and an attempt to si- to silence all of our rights to free speech. Most troubling with the behavior and the letter is children are watching, children are listening, children will copy. We have a moral responsibility to behave and to set good examples for the next generation. Let's see. So once again, the Fire Chief reported an increase in alarms at the 11/27 Fire Commission meeting. He said that there were 225 more alarms than this time last year, and there were 482 more alarms than this time five years ago. The, let's see, they provided ALS intercept transport to the hospital where our paramedic rode in the ambulance 23 times. There were 432 alarms since the last meeting. There were 102 overlapping simultaneous alarms. The Fire Department responded to the highway 19 times. 68% of the calls were EMS-related. Three alarms did not receive the Fire Department, a Fire Department response, because no Fire Department apparatus were available. AMR did respond. These statistics continue to show us the need for more personnel, more apparatus, and more paramedics. The Chief also reported that he filed for two FEMA grants. One is for 42 sets of protective equipment at $147,000, and the second grant was for an engine pumper at $625,000. The town will find out if they are successful next year. Let's see. So, okay. So we all have to support the Fire Department, the Fire Chief, and his request for more personnel, apparatus, and paramedics. So I want to encourage everyone to watch the Fire Commission meeting, which was on, on November 27th. You will have the opportunity to hear the Chief and the Commission go through that Fire Committee's recommendations one by one. It's important to watch the meeting, because you will hear the whys and the why-nots of the recommendations. A summary of what the Fire Chief and the Fire Commissioners agree on will be presented to First Selectman Mike Frida. So what I'd like to do, because many people have not seen the report and have not watched the meeting or did not attend the meeting, is just to give a general gist so that some people have an idea as to what happened at the meeting. So as far as the, the first item of the report was about AMR and recommendations to improve their service, and the answer was no comment, because the town is trying to get the PSAR back, which is the Public Service Area Responder, and the matter is in litigation, so it's not appropriate to discuss it. The second item in the report was about dispatchers and recommendations. The answer was, the Fire Department supports dispatchers and will work collaboratively with the Police Department. However, dispatchers fall under the Police Department's jurisdiction. The third item in the report was about purchasing and placing paramedic equipment on Engine Number One, and to summon overtime replacement, should the firefighter or paramedic have to go in an ambulance to the hospital? The answer was, the National Firefighter Standards might not support a paramedic on an engine. There may not, there may be no firefighters for overtime, which is necessary to make this work. This idea changes firefighter assignments. Unilateral changes are illegal. The union has to approve. The fourth item in the report was about hiring two firefighter paramedics to be placed on a Monday-through-Friday day shift. The answer was, this idea is a violation of firefighter labor agreement. There is no peak demand. The union will not vote in favor of this labor change. They did support the hiring of two full-time firefighter paramedics, utilizing the $140,000, with the Chief looking to hire two more in firefighters in the next budget. With the economic boom and tax revenue from that economic boom, this is affordable. Many taxpayers are willing to have a small tax increase to support the Fire Department. How much is a life worth to us? The fifth item in the report was about volunteer firefighters and ways to increase and keep them. The answer was, they agreed with the recommendations, and also agreed with an increase in tax deferments for firefighters, and they agreed with the training for them. The sixth item in the report was about vehicles and equipment. The answer was, they agreed with the purchase of PPE, which is Personal Protective Equipment. They agreed with creating a budget line item for continuous PPE replenishment. The light item, the line item of $10,000 figure, which was recommended, must be increased. They agreed with replacing Engine Number One. They agreed with replacing the 30-year-old ladder truck, Number Two. They agreed with replacing apparatus every three years. And the seventh item in the report was about mutual aid. The answer was, the Chief has expanded mutual aid with area towns. Mutual aid is not utilized for routine calls. Mutual aid and volunteer firefighters do not respond to EMS, ALS calls. The flycar, which is to pay AMR to be on standby for second and third calls, that's illegal. That would be a major union problem. That would be a violation of firefighter labor contract, where you would have non-union people, AMR EMTs and paramedics, providing service. Again, many, many details regarding this report were discussed, and I really encourage people to watch, watch that Fire Commission meeting. The next item I have Nancy already mentioned is relative to the U.S., U.S. Senator Richard Blumenthal calling for the federal probe. I just wanted to add a few things. So this new latest 5G technology relies on new antennas and transmitters that are clustered lower to the ground and will be placed closer to homes and schools. Senator Blumenthal reported on Monday, "Recent 2G and 3G studies have very powerful evidence of tumors and cancers caused in rats exposed to the 2G and 3G wireless RF radio frequency waves." He did state that the safety of the 5G technology needs to be studied. He wrote a letter to the FCC, which is the Federal Communications Commission, and he has demanded they investigate the 5G technology. So what can we do now, since most of us have the 2G or 3G technology with our cellphones? What can we do to help reduce our chances of cancer? Okay, so do not put your cellphone to your head. Use the, people do it. Use the speaker when making or receiving a call, and, or use, put your ear, put earbuds in. This way you're holding the phone away from you. Never place the cellphone next to you on the nightstand at night. At night, plug in the cellphone to charge your phone, and place the phone across the room. Do not carry your cellphone in your pants pocket, your shirt pocket, or next to your body. Carry your cellphone in your purse, a backpack, briefcase, or a bag. I have another FYI I'd like to talk about. I have another FYI I'd like to talk about. So I don't know how many people are aware of this, but the cable companies have proposed a change to the FCC, which would cap how much cable company, cable companies are required to pay local regulatory authorities for franchise fees. The FCC is supposed to decide on this next month. So in Connecticut, the franchise fees are paid to PURA, which is the Public Utilities Regulatory Authority. If this change is approved, this will result in the loss of funding for public community stations and loss of access to those channels. For us, it's no more NHTV, which is the local government channel, the educational channel, and the sports channel. NHTV gets $60,000 in fees, $40,000 from the town, and $15,000 from two annual fundraisers, according to Walter Mann. So I contacted Representative Dave Yakarino, who contacted PURA. This is something that most senators are not in favor. Dave is not in favor. He said he will keep on it. So we can contact Dave and other representatives and senators and tell them we are not in favor of this. So yesterday, I tried calling the FCC, and while I was watching the funeral services for former President George H.W. Bush, okay? And so I was on hold for three hours before I hung up. They kept saying that they'll be right with me. So it's not easy getting in touch with the FCC. So, so a question for you, Mike. You are also against this change requested by the cable companies. What can we do to help fight this and what can you do?
Well, what I can do is, and I've already told Walt Mann, that we would make up the balance of the funding. So we would take care of that aspect of it, but that doesn't solve the channel issue.
Right.
Because if Comcast decides to eliminate the three channels, 18, 19, and 20, then we would lose NHTV as it exists on our local Comcast. So all I could do right now is continue to work with the people that you mentioned, who, none of whom really are for this. We don't know how the federal government's going to rule. So what's, what's the worst-case scenario for the town of North Haven? My commitment would be to fund the balance, which keeps the studio running, and then we would be relegated if we lost the channels to Facebook and social media live meetings. So the key for us, I think, is the, it's a twofold thing. The funding, of course, but the channels, losing those would be something that would be, changed the face of what North Haven TV has been for years here. But I'm committed to make the funding up.
That's good. And it would go, be forced to just go online. Like you could put on the nhtv.com. We would be able to utilize it there because he'd still be able to film it.
Yeah, you just couldn't, you couldn't get it on Comcast at that point.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
The other thing I think is, Mike's maybe mentioned this on other occasions, he's very much involved in the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, and I think they get involved in some of these issues as well, you know, in terms of all the municipalities as a group, you know? So not only through our, you know, state representative and state senator, but the CCM, you know, itself, I think, you know, goes back to the state agencies and, you know, lobbies on behalf or advocates on behalf of the municipalities as a group.
We do that quite often. We do that very often. And in January now, I'll be the first Vice President of CCM, and then in 2020, I'll be taking over as President of CCM. In fact, a few of us, a select few of us, are meeting with Governor-elect Lamont tomorrow at 1:30. So we'll have a, we're going to clear a picture as to where the new governor's coming from, and this may be one of the topics that comes up.
Okay, great. So my last FYI is regarding property and car thefts. So as a reminder to try and deter some of the thefts, to please lock your car and to remove your valuables from your car. So there's new technology out, and I don't know if everybody's heard about it, but we may soon be seeing it used by thieves in our area. So what it is, is it's relay boxes, which are used to capture the signal from key fobs for push-button start cars. The way this works is one thief has a box near your car, and the other thief has one box where he holds it and scans the outside of your house until he captures the key fob signal. It is then relayed to the other box, tricking the car into thinking the key fob is present, thus unlocking the car and enabling the push button to start your car. The thieves then drive away with your car. So what can we do? If you have a keyless, push-button, start car at home, keep your key fob in a metal coffee can or a metal soup can or a metal candy tin. These relay systems do not work through metal. So brazen thieves may even try to capture your car's key fob signal when you are not at home. For example, when they spot you in your car in a parking lot. What can you do, especially since all they have to do is have one thief near your car and the other one can just walk by you and capture the signal from the key fob in your pocket or purse? So what you can do is you can wrap your key fob in tinfoil or place it in a small candy tin. So, pretty, pretty tough stuff to gotta deal with.
The same thing, the same thing's true for garage door openers, too. There's a lot of potential there capturing that signal.
Wow.
Yes, sir.
I have a key.
You have a key.
My name's Joseph Seko, 2000 Ridge Road. I'm a new member of this community. I've only lived here about two and a half years. I really never was a part of politics, never crossed my mind. I'm a man of science. That's what I like to do. That's what I do for my career. But being friends with Danielle Morphy has brought this to my attention, that, you know, there is hatred in this community, and it is a low-level lie. But what is the point that it escalates? And it gets to the point where it's a physical manifestation of it that actually injures people. And I think our community is just becoming more diversified, and there's going to be more and more issues that arise, small, big, medium, but they're going to happen. And I think we, as a community, should educate ourselves so that we can educate the people who don't, you know, accept differences and don't accept change. So before this becomes a real huge issue, and then we have many of the instances that we see across our country. So I think we should all look within ourselves to reach out to the people who do these hateful things and kind of say, educate them and help them to better themselves and better our community. Thanks.
Thank you.
I wrote this down, I don't want to kind of, I'm really good at going off left field when I speak off the cuff, so I just wrote this down tonight. Christopher Prodey, 194 Clintonville Road, lifelong resident of North Haven, husband of Danielle Morphy, father of our two children, and victim of a hateful and threatening letter in the mail because someone does not agree with my wife. Unless your name is Len Fasano, it's easy to denounce unwanted aggressive behavior or bullying as a bad thing, especially when that behavior is repeated. Two esteemed, three, now that Mike has said what he said, three esteemed respected town officials, Mike, Dave Yakarino, and Sally Boehminger, have been victims of bullying. Numerous other town residents have been victims as well. This is a problem in our town, whether you want to see the writing on the wall or not. This is our town's stigma. And while I appreciate what has been said here tonight by the board, we can only see the things that we have words for. We can only see the things that we have words for. So we need a clear vision. What will come beyond the words spoken tonight? What are we working towards? What is the purpose? Where is the fulfillment of this? As elected servant leaders, you three are accountable for making the town residents feel safe, comfortable, and protected. You don't get to choose your residents, they get to choose you. You are supposed to be looking out for us. What should be done is continually encouraging our residents to do the things that they're good at, whether that's continuing forward progress in youth sports like David Micus or taking part in local political discourse like my wife. Our residents will never be able to achieve their goals without your support, safety, and protection. People come first. Human beings, not numbers, always come first. There is no rationalizing this. By not genuinely acting on the threats your residents receive, you are subconsciously telling your residents their safety is not your priority. And Mike, we've spoken on numerous occasions about economic development. I think you're a great town manager, and I think you're building an awesome North Haven. Been here for 39 years. How long is it going to last, though, if we don't work together as a group, together? Let's build a community. Let's a pillar of safety and trust for generations to come. Elected government leaders are judged by the quality of their towns, not when the waters are calm, but when the seas are rough and if people come to their aid. I see a lot of people in this room right now have come to someone's aid tonight. Being safe and comfortable in our town is a right, not a privilege. You are in control of this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
I just want to say one thing.
Okay, Danielle.
Thank you, all three of you, for speaking out publicly about a very unsettling event that is, you know, horrible to embark on a holiday experience like this. I just want to thank everybody who's spoken out here publicly and privately and supported our family when we were terrified and vandalized. And I know that that's probably a drop in the bucket for other people, and so I just hope that we work on, as Chris said, the stigma of this intolerance in North Haven. Whether you've lived here eight years, like I have, or 39 years, like Chris, or 60 years, 62, 75, 90, we should all be a community. So I feel that I am humbled to hear the support from our family about this, and I thank you all for coming out and speaking out, people who have never even spoken a public comment before. Thank you so much. So thank you.
Seeing no other public comment, we make kind of motion to adjourn.
Yeah, well, you know what? Before we adjourn, I think that this is our last meeting of the year, and I think it would be appropriate for the three of us each to give a holiday greeting. So I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy Hanukkah and Happy Holidays. Have a safe holiday season and be kind to one another.
Yes.
Phil?
I'll say the same. Happy Holidays.
I will say the same, and thank you for those that attended the Christmas tree lighting and the menorah lighting this past weekend. It was a great community event. Happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas, everyone. We'll see you in January.
Motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
Aye.
Well, then we'll get to see some of them.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.